Alright, alright, getting dancing again, I like that. So you had a setback and then you got some information and you thought about the importance of exercise. You got a resource, you developed a plan, and now it's time to just keep executing your plan.
That's what I intended to do.
And before you know it, we'll be dancing again.
Good.
Alright.
I'm staying active every day. I'm taking charge of my health.
And I'm here with a very special guest, Mari Coe Van Kampen. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So tell me, you're here at this brand-new wellness center and staying active. I know you're already very active, so tell me about physical activity, exercise.
Well, I'm a very lazy person.
Okay.
I grew up in Hawaii and my girlfriends were out surfing and I was the beach bunny.
Alright.
So, you know, it's a challenge for me to make myself exercise, but I have been much more conscientious about it over the last three years because I just know that I need to. And I go to a couple of classes that I'm very religious about. I have to be or else I won't go. And I take a belly dancing class. It's belly funk, so it's kind of mild aerobics, belly dancing, and core strengthening.
So before you go on there, that's great. I think that already you're hitting such an important point.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, a lot of us, if we don't have a plan, specific plan, and some kind of accountability, and for you it's going to classes. For some people it's having an exercise buddy. For some people it's having a routine, a certain time of the day where they have it scheduled in their day, just like an important meeting or a family event.
Yes.
And, you know, so you said, "Look, I'm honest with myself, I'm naturally a little on the lazy side." You like lazing around on the beach as opposed to being out there with the surfers. But you've realized physical activity is really important, and so you have this plan. So you were telling us, okay, so you do a belly funk class?
Yes, and it's followed by a gentle stretch, which is basically a beginning yoga class.
Oh, perfect.
And for me, it's the perfect combination. And I go twice a week, could be more, but my partner, my exercise partner is my dog.
Oh.
So I do religiously walk my dog. Unfortunately, he's getting old, so he's slowing down a bit.
Oh, no.
But that keeps me, at least with a very, you know, with some daily minimal activity.
So that way you get something, because you're walking the dog, you're going to the classes. And then I understand that within this context, this booklet has helped you kind of track that level of activity.
I looked through it recently in preparation to...
So we have this booklet, Exercise and Physical Activity.
And I was very interested to know, in going through all the, excuse me, the individual exercises, that pretty much all of them, I would say 98% of them, are covered in one way or another in the two classes that I go to. And that was very reassuring, because I have great trust in my teachers. They're both fantastic. But it was nice to have an outside perspective and be able to look at this and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing this, and I'm doing this, and I'm doing this." And the one thing that I haven't done specifically, that's not specifically addressed in the two classes that I'm going to, is weights.
Okay.
And I know for women of a certain age, osteoporosis becomes a factor. So that's something now I'm going to try to actually add into my weekly schedule, because one of my teachers does have a weight class. And so, you know, it's been a wonderful touchstone for me.
Right, so that way you get a balance of the endurance, the weight, the resistance, you know, all these...
Stretch, I think.
Stretch, right. So you get with the belly and the yoga, you get the stretch, endurance, all in one thing. But then you add little activities here and there, you add the walking, the dog, and now you want to add specifically some weight training.
Yes, because I know that that's really important.
Right, of course, that's important. Pretty much everybody could benefit from that. And so it's interesting that you've been able to use this booklet, first of all, to see, it was reassuring that you see these photos of exercises in there and you say, "Hey, I'm doing that." So even somebody already says, "Oh, I'm doing all this stuff," could benefit from kind of double-checking.
Yes.
Yeah. You mentioned something else really interesting. You said that you trust your exercise instructor very much.
Yes.
How long have you been working with them?
Well, the stretch teacher I've actually been with for eight years, because I had a yoga class in my living room. I didn't organize it.
Wow.
I have a large living room, so it was a neighborhood yoga class. And this woman came in. And then when that finally dissolved after several years, she teaches at the Hollywood Y, and that's somewhere near me, so I followed her.
So that's perfect. So, and there's something about that in this booklet as well, that if you're looking for an instructor or a personal trainer, because that could help in a lot of people's cases, and for a lot of us, I know that if I don't have somebody, an exercise buddy or an exercise instructor, somebody to kind of keep me accountable, make sure that I'm going, I kind of can fall off every once in a while, just like you were saying.
And I've been with her for so long that she knows me.
Right.
She can tailor, even within the class structure, if I'm having a particular problem on a particular day, she can suggest a variation in the routine.
So you trust her and she knows you.
Yes.
And for those of you watching at home, some guidelines from the booklet would be seeing if the person has some kind of certification, asking how long they've been doing what they've been doing, finding out if they've been working with people your age, particularly if you're elderly, particularly frail, some people have expertise in that area. And again, I mean, I think that's great that you've been doing that and that you're going to be doing more, and it's great to have you, where we're talking about what we can do to live longer and live better and full vitality, and thank you so much. And for those of you watching at home, you can call the number below and order copies of this wonderful booklet, and we'd love to hear from you. Let us know, give us a ring.
What I'd like you to know, if you're going to adopt an animal from Los Angeles Animal Services, is that that companion animal is going to be spayed or neutered before you take her home, or him home. We're also going, will have given the vaccines that are appropriate up to that age. So you'll come with an animal, and you'll get a free vet certificate to go for a vet check with one of our local licensed veterinarians to make sure everything is A-OK with your companion animal. So those things are all included. Also for seniors, there are fee reductions for seniors who have income levels that qualify. So there's a number that's rolling across your screen, and that's the number that you call to find out more of the details. We have reduced adoption fees. In some circumstances, you can even get a free dog license. So call us, come on down, we've got love just waiting for you.
So if an emergency happens, are you prepared? Do you know who to call? Do you have a meeting place? An emergency can happen at any time. You need to be ready. A family's a team, so take a few minutes and put a family emergency communications plan together as a team. Check out labt.org for all the info. Just be ready, prepare together. Alright, let's go, come on! This ball is not going to play itself.
It's my job to teach you the safe way to ride a bike. You should always wear a helmet, just in case you fall. Ride on the sidewalk, it's safer than the street.
Okay.
When crossing a driveway, stop your bike and look both ways.
Like this?
That's good. And obey all traffic laws.
Traffic laws?
Yep. Like stopping at stop signs and walking your bike across the street.
Boy, I'm glad you're my big brother.
I know.
Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Today we're going to talk about planning before a crisis. It's important to understand what plans should take place before a crisis occurs. Things that need to be taken into consideration include cultural or generational differences, beliefs, values, unspoken topics. Decisions need to be made about medical, legal, and family issues. It's important to talk about the wishes of individuals before a crisis occurs, about their care and their medical treatment, not just what the family prefers or what the family thinks the person may want. Then, respect those wishes, because those wishes are important to the individual. Remember, people have the right to be in control of the quality of their life, understand the purpose of their treatment. They have the right to dignity and respect, comfort, which is physical, emotional, and spiritual. They may want to laugh, or be angry, or be sad, all interchangeable at random times, even if it doesn't make sense to others. They also have the right to have the truth. So what are some actions a person needs to take before a crisis? Well, there's advance directives, which are the legal instructions given by individuals specifying what actions should be taken in the event that they are no longer able to make decisions due to illness or incapacity. Advance directive forms can be downloaded from the internet, some doctor's offices have them, legal services have them also, some community-based organizations have them. Once completed, it's a good idea to give your primary physician a copy for their records. Talk to your loved ones while they're in good condition and good health, and then respect their wishes. Make it a point to have your voice heard, even when you can no longer speak for yourself by using an advance directive. It's important to plan before a crisis.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. And Leslie, we were going to talk a little bit about the security features of the Code Amber Alert Tag. Can you explain some of those security features?
Yes, I can.
Please.
It's 256 encrypted.
Encrypted information, right.
And as far as identity theft, if they find your card, there's nothing that they can do with it other than get your name.
Right, I understand.
Or your personal, your medical information. The second tier, there's a two-tier to this, where when you go to the website, you could put in, you have your own password, like you would your email or a credit card.
Right.
And you could put in all your personal information. We live in a state that has fires and earthquakes.
Everything you can imagine.
Right. And you could scan in all your policies, policy numbers. Only you have access to it.
Okay, so there's not only the individual security code, you have an individual password.
No passcode, right.
Well, I thought one of the most important features is a first responder, God forbid you're in an emergency room.
Right.
Can, by scanning this or accessing the website, get the pertinent information to maybe save your life.
Yes, yes.
That's a great comfort.
Yes, that's the information that will come up first and only.
Yeah, because so many people, actually, it's hard for me to remember what I'm allergic to, for example. And I love the idea, well, here, we're going to show people now the information that is contained, but not limited to just these things.
Right.
With your Code Amber Alert Tag. We, this is new, but it's such a good idea. It should have been around for ages.
Right.
How did you move this from the concept and the worries of caring for your mother into a reality? This had to be like a family undertaking or engaged a lot of people?
Well, because there is so much on, for children, this is a division of the Code Amber abduction of children.
Right, of course.
And caring and being passionate about my mother and seeing what goes on in the hospitals and with the elderly, they need a voice.
Boy, do they ever. Now, while we were on the subject, the website, can you give us the website address? Because I really would like our viewers to check this out. And the website is? Code Amber Alert Tag?
...dot C-O-M slash L-D-R.
Okay, great, great, great. Now, we're going to have that up on the screen, so we don't have to repeat it endlessly. And when a person goes to the website, even a casual, even if driven by casual interest, they're going to get some questions that frankly, may be the first time they've addressed them. Do you know who to call in case of an emergency? Do you have your insurance policy number? Who's your medical provider? That stuff is not always at the tip of our tongues.
Right, and you would put that in, so that when it's not at the tip of your tongue, no matter who finds it, the first responses have that information, because they will ask you, "Do you have insurance?"
Of course, yes, they will.
Yeah, you know.
For those $1,200 ambulance rides.
And I try to encourage the elderly on patient information, which they're now implicating, put your pharmacist.
Yes.
Because their medications change all the time.
Yes, and they may be taking several medications.
They usually are taking several, aren't they? And you want to make sure they interact with one another. And who better knows this than your pharmacist?
Exactly. Now, you can print this information out once you've put it into the forms, correct?
Absolutely, you could print it out, you could hand it out. I think it will one day replace the patient information form that we all have to fill out at doctor's offices.
Wouldn't that be a wonder?
Yes.
You know, it's funny, having twice now in the last few months visited emergency rooms, it would be a boon not to have to keep filling these things out.
All you have to do is show them this card.
Yeah.
They pull it up, boom, they have all your information.
And Code Amber Alert Tag, it's important that you get that down, because you can access the website. And is this a day-to-day thing with you now, Leslie?
Oh, this is a day-to-day.
Is it taking over your life?
It's taken over my life, and it's cost-effective.
Oh, yes, the cost.
Yes.
I was astonished when you told me the number. Listen to this number.
It's $19.95 plus tax for a year.
A year, a year.
A year.
Not per month, a year.
And it makes a great present. I had my insurance agent buy them as thank-you presents. He sent me a Visa card and said, "Have lunch on me," and I had so much problem with it that he has since found out this makes a great present, and it lasts for a year. The renewal lasts for a year. If they mention that they saw the show, Aging in Los Angeles. Their reward will be, we will give them an extra month to that $19.95.
See, there are rewards to being a viewer of Aging Well in L.A. Leslie, thank you so much.
Yes, very welcome.
Well, I know it's still painful, the loss of mom, there's nothing worse, but you've done something positive in her memory.
Yes.
I wish you great luck with this.
Thank you.
I'm going to sign up today.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being with us here on Aging Well in Los Angeles. We'll see you next time.
Because the steamship lines know that when they bring their ship in, they don't have to wait on tide. They can bring the ship right in. They're able to fully load their vessel. They don't have to light load it, that we have the facilities that match the channel depth so they can totally unload their cargo here.
Well, it's important for the Port of Los Angeles to deepen the channels so we can provide our customers with what they need. We're a global gateway here. Pacific Rim is very robust trade for the entire country. So it's important for us to be able to give our customers what we want. So our channel deepening gives us that and gives us that extra margin of safety.
As the name implies, the Main Channel Deepening Project is focused on the Port of L.A.'s main channel, home to an array of outstanding operators, including China Shipping and Traypak. In addition, the project will deepen the waterways leading to the Houston-NYK, Evergreen, and Yang-Ming container terminals. When complete, the main channel will be deepened to 53 feet, providing the draft clearance necessary for the world's biggest ships for many years to come.
Well, the business benefit to our customers and to the shippers is that they'll be able to build whatever size ship they feel they're going to need to compete in the future. And they're going to know that the Port of Los Angeles with its deep channel is going to be able to handle that.
Most of the steamship lines have moved to larger ships that need deeper water because those ships achieve an economy of scale for them. They don't have to ship their cargo through the canal or to some other location. They can bring it all in here into Los Angeles. We have superior facilities. We have superior railroad connections. The main channel is a piece of that logistics system that we have built to accommodate the customers' needs.
Now, you may wonder where all the dredge material is going. Well, some of it's being put to good use to create 50 new acres of shallow water habitat area, all part of the Port of L.A.'s goal of protecting the environment while optimizing navigation for any ship and every customer.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Los Angeles City Hall Council Chambers this morning. The date is January 10th, 2012. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the President of the Los Angeles City Council. I'll take that mercy applause. Before we begin our meeting, we have an honored guest that is with us today. The youngest mayor ever elected to the city of Bamenda in Cameroon, 41 years old. If I could have Mayor Fangu Kletus Tangway, please rise so we can welcome you. Welcome. Welcome to Los Angeles. And I know that you're newly elected, and I wish you well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for joining us. We will be starting the council shortly as soon as we have a quorum. We are one member short, and we have two members that are en route and should be here within minutes. So please excuse us, we'll get started momentarily. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We are back in business. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacorn, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weesar, Corretts, Krikory, Lebronch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves, Englander seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, so if I can ask everyone in the chambers to please rise for our flag salute, which will be led by Mr. Englander.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Join me, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So at this time, members, I'd like to direct your attention to the agenda. We can begin to go through the items right now. Madam Clerk, if we could begin with the first section of the agenda.
Mr. President, before running through the agenda, there are requests for continuance, there's requests to continue items 13 and 17 to January 24th.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 15 are Department of Building and Safety liens noticed for public hearing. The department reports that items 1 and 11 may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid.
Without objection.
Mr. President, there's also, there's cards on items 1, 5, 9, and 11.
1, 5, 9, and 11? Okay, without objection, those items have been received and filed. We know which items we have the cards on. Why don't we open and close the hearing on the remaining ballots? Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I believe Councilmember Rosendahl wished to call item 15 special.
Okay, in fact, members, any specials? Mr. Rosendahl, 15, I think I see Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Weesar, if we can continue item 14 for 30 days, please.
Okay, so that 30 days, where does that bring us?
February 10th.
Okay, without objection.
30 days.
Okay, so on items 14 and 15, we want to continue those items for 30 days. And again, what date is that?
February 10th.
All right, without objection. So if we could now open the roll on the remaining items? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, next order of business.
Item 16 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 15. A motion is required. I believe the motion is being circulated at this time. Do you wish to hold this item on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that item on the desk. Next.
Items 18 through 21 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, are there any cards? Any specials, members? 21 by Mr. Englander. Okay. Let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to...
Items 22 through 28 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us. Any cards?
Cards on item 22.
Cards. Mr. Members, specials? Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I don't know if you're going to hear item 22, but I wanted to call it special.
Okay, well, it's a card on it, so we'll hear it. Any other specials? Hearing, seeing none? Open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, we just received cards on item 28.
Okay.
And there's requests to receive and file item 26.
Without objection. Okay, so let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, that takes us to general public comment.
All righty. In fact, before I take up the public comment cards, have... Has the motion on item 16 been circulated?
No, Mr. President, not yet.
All right, so I'm going to call three people forward for public comment. When I call your name, please come forward. When I look up to the center aisle, I expect to see three people there. First, my friend Daniel Gus, Marisha Morris, and Sean Murphy. Good to see you again. If you three would please come forward? We'll begin with Mr. Gus.
Thank you, good morning. Unfortunately, I shouldn't have to be here today, but there is a humane crisis that got worse in Mr. Garcetti's district. And so I'm here to outline it and what I'm seeking as a remedy. Next week, if this isn't remedied, I'll create a blog so members of the media and public can see this. These two dogs were found in horrendous conditions in Mr. Garcetti's district. I am calling on Mr. Garcetti to adopt these dogs personally. They were found in these horrendous conditions, piles of feces and debris. Animal Services failed to document the conditions on the first visit. They failed to cite, they failed to follow up, they failed to respond to my public information request. The animals have grown, they've suffered more, they're tougher to adopt, and now they've been seized when Mr. Garcetti, who I had a polite discussion with last week, assured me that the conditions would not endure. And unfortunately, they did. The dogs were alone for four days this week. In these conditions, Animal Services refused to provide the documentation in a timely manner for my information request. This is what happens when there is a corrupt commission, there's a corrupt commissioner, and Animal Services won't respond to the fact that they didn't document the cruelty in the first place. If I didn't document the conditions, they'd say I was crazy. The problem is, I did document them, they got worse. Mr. Garcetti did not call in the general manager to ask her why this happened, why they failed to document the conditions, why they failed to cite the party, why they failed to respond to my public information request. I'm calling on Councilmember Garcetti to show civic leadership and personally adopt these animals or help us find a home so that they're not killed in the shelter, which they're now on the clock to be killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, Council. I have learned information that would basically benefit the homeowners. I contacted the Council Committee for Housing and Economic last night, and I'm waiting for the response from that. I'm a member of Council District 8, which is Councilman Parks District. And if there's a deputy here, I would love to speak with the deputy or speak with someone who would be able to assist me in order to put the information that I have on record to have a special committee or some type of special meeting with you all based on several violations, either constitutional, Senate bills, and different real estate laws.
Okay, I don't see a representative from Council District 8 here. I'll ask that maybe one come down. If not, I'll have another staff person come chat with you. But let's give them a few moments, okay?
Definitely.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, welcome.
Morning, Mr. New President, I hope I'm still your friend. Yeah. Good morning, City Council President. The Sears stores are closing all, 100 Sears stores and K-Marts are closing. There's a Sears on Laurel Canyon and Victory. I hope it doesn't close. If it does, what are the people going to do? They're not going to go to Macy's, it's too expensive. So we need to rebuild a shopping center on Valley Plaza. I spoke to you about, I spoke about four years, five years ago, this April. We need to get that shopping center built. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sean, and it is good to see you again. Now, if I could have Sylvia Duran, Michael H., and Matt Dowd, my friend, please come forward. Welcome, Ms. Duran.
Hello. Yes, good morning, my name's Sylvia Duran. I live in Council District 9. And I'm here today to report and I'm here to expose an abusive business. The name of the business is a recycling currently, but its former name was Hugo's New Downtown Metals. This business located, is located on 2728 Long Beach Street, Los Angeles, California 90058. And this is an industrial recycling plant. And this is an industrial recycling plant that crushes refrigerators, boilers, stoves, and other metals. They do it on a busy street, near the train, near the metro rails, and a few feet from The company uses two large industrial machines to crush large metals, large bulk of metals. The noise is so incredible that it wakes up residents up to two blocks away, and they don't let us have a normal meal. They operate from 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., more or less six days a week. The dangerous part about this is who works for the company, its location, and who backs them up. Local people for the company, I mean, people, local people work for the company recycling from their homes, and I mean their yards when I mean they're talking about homes, through a program called community recycling. Which makes complicated the problem more because we get, we get extreme noise from the front and sometimes from our neighbors. We have complained to Jan Perry's office, but we've been ignored.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. Thank you. Michael H. And then Matt Dowd.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My name is Michael Hunt. I think you guys know me pretty much for the last five years of being down here and winning X amount of dollars. I've been listening to Wendy Grill on TV, The Controller, and she says that you guys are really in trouble with the budget. I made a proposal to Bill, the 11th District Council guy, to settle all 15 cases in one ballot, saving the city hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. We think that this should be done with, and the city should spend their money on something that really works for the city. At this time, you know, I challenge the city to meet us up in Bill's office and get these 15 lawsuits out of the way for a fraction of the cost, saving all the attorneys in the city of Los Angeles hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you don't know anything, we're back in court on Friday for the 6334, which could cost the city another $1.7 million, and we are ready to do that, all 15 cases at a fraction of the cost. So that, Bill, I think now that you should stand up and endorse what we're trying to do, save the city some money and get out the gridlock of the 4215. I think Matt Dowd and I, you know, we've been down here, and you guys know us, and you know, I think pretty comparable settlements should be made so that we can knock off all the nonsense and get on with our lives and things like that. You know, I think this should be done right away. I think Lori Rittenberg and Deborah Fox should step up to the plate along with Nuch, and I think that you're ready to, to get all this finished with and get it gone. So with this, you know, I'm going to leave, turn it over to Matt Dowd, and we're going to speak on the same thing, and please, let's get it done. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you for coming. Matt Dowd?
Yes, thank you so much for all the kind words and the introduction. It's been a tough six years, now six years, and it's been a great experience for me coming into these chambers and rewriting the rules and in the chambers and in Venice Beach. So I'm glad we got Tom Labonge here to, you know, give me this accolade on behalf of the city. So I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, now let me talk about the rules of decorum. I needed that segment for a video. I'm setting up the future already. I don't even have to come here now to have my thank you speech. I've already got it recorded now on Channel 35. But look, I want to talk about the decorum. You see, Mike Hunt is down here again, and we're tired of, I'm sure people are tired of seeing this merry-go-round. That was years ago Dennis Zine first talked about the merry-go-round. See, we're not occupied. We didn't leave a mess outside, and we're still here with legitimate, actual issues and damages and violations and citations that haven't gone away, and there's hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of attorneys on it. You know, as far as the decorum, this is the only place I got to speak about it, so I have to be frank and honest and speak about it. And the only thing you've really got with my content is repetition. It's, that's what Norwalk Ninth Circuit ruled. You know, if I say, "My cunt, my cunt, my cunt, my cunt, my cunt," then you could probably turn around, "Oh, that's okay, wasting time for repetition." Do you understand that? But if I just say, "Gee, I just came down here, I'm trying to settle the case with Mike Hunt and Matt Dowd," then thank you Ninth Circuit for recognizing that that's free content and expression. Even Ned Flanders, the city attorney, will tell you that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. So, Madam Clerk, where does that bring us at this point?
Mr. President, item 16, the motion has been circulated, so if you can take up that item right now if you'd like.
I would definitely like to do that, seeing that there's no one in the queue to speak on this item. On item 16, can we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next order of business.
Item 21, call special by Councilmember Englander. I believe Mr. Englander's questions have been answered, and that item may be voted on at this time.
Mr. Englander? Okay. Then, there are no other questions on item 21? Why don't we, was it item 21 or item 20?
21.
Let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next order of business.
Item 1, call special for cards.
Sean, come on down. See, Sean is smart. He quickly puts in his card. He's the first one up. Our friend, Sean Murphy.
I had to take the time to read it before I put them in.
That's good.
Mr. President, I'm for this item. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, the department recommends that this item may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, then, without objection. Next.
Item 5, call special for cards.
Sean, what are you, just trying to get your exercise in? You should have just stayed down. Don't be sorry. It's okay. Sean Murphy, again, on item 5.
Can you, what, tell me the item. What's item 5?
Item 5 is a lien at property at 11856 West McDonald Street.
I guess I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, thank you. Let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Madam Clerk, what's, what's next?
Item 9, call special for cards.
Sean, you better stay close. Sean Murphy?
Okay. Item 9 is, item 9 is, I'm against this item. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, thank you. Let's open the roll? Let's close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us to what item?
Item 11, call special for cards.
Elizabeth Kwan, please come forward. Elizabeth Kwan. Hi, good morning. Welcome.
Hi, Mr. President. I was here earlier, and I heard that the lien had been collected. I just wanted to know who the lien had been collected from.
If I could have Building and Safety, could you chat with Ms. Kwan and answer her question? You want to answer your question again on the record? What was your question?
Nope, that's okay. I can just have a chat with you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right. So let's open the roll on that item?
Mr. President, the department recommends that item 11 be received and filed as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay, and without objection. That brings us to what item?
Item 22, call special by Councilmember Caretz and for cards.
Okay, what I'd like to do, though, if I could take item 28 out of order, and we'll do 22 after this, so we, if we could do item 28.
Okay, item 28, call special for cards.
Okay, I believe that's Mr. Matt Dowd. Matt, if you would please come forward.
All right, reset the clock, reset the clock. I've got two minutes.
Don't worry about it. I'll give you your extra seconds.
All right, thank you. Yes, this one's as shady as it gets, as shady as it gets. Labonge Garcetti, of course. Transfer appropriate, $500,000 in Council District 4 from an AB 1290 fund, redevelopment projects and services. Yes, $250,000 to Council District 4 salaries general and $250,000 to General City Purposes Fund. So, Tom, let me get a job down there in your district with some of those funds. I need a job. Let me, let me patrol the taco trucks down there on Wilshire or something, because you're getting a bunch of money here. So I just got to point that out. Shady as it gets. But of course, as long as Tom Labonge and Eric Garcetti got their names on it, it all just flies right through. No questions. So Dennis Zine, it's good to see you again, the new year, too. Let me say you're looking good, reading the magazine, city attorney here. Thank you so much, Mr. Weston. It's always fun.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. So let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Mr. Garcetti, for purposes of an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and on behalf of our Council President Herb Weston and myself, it is my pleasure to welcome representatives that we have here visiting us from Korea, from the Lotte Entertainment Group, who are here in Los Angeles. Kwon Ik Sun, Ju Young Park, Min Hong Han, all from the Lotte Entertainment Group, one of South Korea's largest conglomerates, consists of over 60 business units that are engaged in diverse industries, entertainment, electronics, publishing. But the Lotte Group and the city of Los Angeles recently signed a memorandum of understanding and agreed to jointly work to spearhead the growth of film, entertainment, and media businesses in Los Angeles and encourage foreign investment from South Korea to develop business opportunities and to create jobs for Angelenos. As the representative for the Hollywood area, it is my great pleasure to welcome you here. As we've seen Hollywood expand not just in the formal boundaries of our neighborhoods, but throughout the world, we welcome this friendship, this investment. We look forward to bilateral trade around that, and we'd like to, the Council President and I would like to present you this certificate of welcome on the occasion of your visit to the city of Los Angeles. Please join me in welcoming the Lotte Entertainment Group. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a word? Would you like to say a word? Would you like to say a word? Very brief?
Yes.
Yeah, dear distinguished guest, my name is Son Kwang-ik, and I am the CEO of Lotte Entertainment, the entertainment business arm of Lotte Group, one of the largest conglomerates in Korea. On behalf of the Lotte Group, I am honored to be here and grateful for the invitation and hospitality by the city of Los Angeles. We would like to work with the city of Los Angeles and to create a long-lasting business that will benefit both Lotte and the city of Los Angeles. Again, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge?
I just wanted to respond and say, "Come, Samida, chingu." And we thank you. Los Angeles has a long relationship with Boots on, Korea is a sister city, as well as Olympic City, Los Angeles, and Seoul. So we're very proud of our relationship, and in the Central Park of Los Angeles, Regent is Griffith Park, and you know, in the central of Seoul is Nam Sung Mountain. You know Nam Sung Mountain? Well, many people in Los Angeles call Mount Hollywood. True, Mr. Garcetti will tell you, Nam Sung North, because everyone climbs it in the morning. Come, Samida.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and welcome. Now that brings us, where are we, Madam Clerk? That brings us where?
Item 22, call special by Councilmember Caretz and for cards.
Okay, so what I want to do is ask Mr. Caretz, what's your fancy, sir? Would you like to speak first, maybe you and Mr. Rosendahl, or do you want us to take public comment first, or what?
I think you could take whatever public comment you have first, and then I'd be happy to speak.
No, Mr. Rosendahl. Only one great?
Great, great, great.
Adam Cohen, please come forward. Rebecca Butler. And Mark Roy McGrath, if you could please come forward. Welcome. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to come and speak to us, the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Dear President Weston and City Council members, my name is Adam Cohen. I'm currently a public health doctoral student with a focus in sexual or reproductive health at UCLA. I'm here to speak on behalf of the UCLA Reproductive Health Interest Group. This group has been following the issue of inadequate health and safety measures within the adult film industry for the past seven years. On behalf of the Reproductive Health Interest Group, I'm here to support the petition that requires condom usage in the adult film industry. This is a workplace injury prevention plan. It is unfair that adult film performers should be exposed to preventable infections in the workplace. It is unfair that the city should sanction unhealthy working conditions through the city's film permitting process. I ask you all to consider the cost burden placed on the Los Angeles community for those workplace injuries. The average lifetime cost of HIV is $600,000. Since most performers lack inadequate, lack adequate health insurance coverage, the community picks up the cost. Condoms, on the other hand, are free. Mandatory condom use would significantly reduce the workplace injuries and the burden of disease on this greater community. So within California, the production and distribution of adult film is legal. Workers within the industry deserve to be afforded the same basic rights and protections other Angelenos enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And for the record, would you state your name?
Rebecca Butler. Thank you. I'm sorry for my shaky voice. I'm not very comfortable speaking in front of people, but this issue is just too important for me not to speak up today. I'm standing here in front of you as a concerned citizen of the city of Los Angeles, and I'm here to speak on the issue of health and safety in the adult film industry. Call me naive, but I was actually shocked when I first learned that condoms are not routinely used in the production of adult films. That just doesn't seem right to me. I'm afforded protections in my workplace to ensure that I come home every evening just as healthy as when I show up in the morning. It only seems fair that all Angelenos are afforded these same protections and don't have to worry about coming home from work with easily preventable infections. I can't believe that the film permitting process currently allows and effectively endorses the production of adult films without basic health and safety measures. Tying the film permitting process to condom usage seems to me an obvious and necessary measure to protect our fellow Angelino workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, state your name, sir.
Mark Roy McGrath. I am a proponent on the measure. I just want to state that we collected 71,000 Los Angeles citizens' signatures in this measure. We collected them a month ahead of time. It's clear that the voters see this as a common sense issue. It's clear that the voters see this as a common sense issue, that any Angelino, no matter your occupation, should be afforded a modicum of protection within the workplace. Providing adult film performers condoms is not only common sense, it is the ethical thing to do. As stewards of this community, it is your ethical responsibility not just to represent the 99%, not just to represent the 1%, but to represent that .05% who does not have a voice, that .05% who works under conditions that are deplorable. Condoms are the most effective way to prevent the infections these people are exposed to. They can be edited out of films. They are, for all intents and purposes, free. Any production company that would like to have access to condoms can contact me or AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and we will send them two cases. We will send them 3,000 condoms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Chase. I think it's Derek Burks. Matt Dowd, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you very much for allowing us to bring this issue before you, and thank you very much for taking it so seriously. I have been working on this issue for three years, and over that time, my name is Brian Chase, and I'm Assistant General Counsel for AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Over the past three years, I've spoken with literally dozens of adult film performers, most of them very young, most of them women, girls, actually, all of them terrified. They're scared about the conditions they have to work under, and they're scared that if they speak out, they'll never get work again. Performers should never be afraid that if they advocate for themselves, they're not going to be able to find work, that their talent agents will tell them that they have to go to unsafe workplaces, and if they don't agree to it, they're just not going to get a paycheck. That's not fair, and that's what this initiative is about. I hope that the council will approve the initiative to protect these folks who live in our communities and really, really need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Derek Burks, and I am a former adult film actor. In the year of 2010, I got into the adult film industry. I was only in the industry for a few months, and in that short period of time, I got chlamydia, gonorrhea, herpes, and HIV in September of 2010. Since that time, I was neglected by the adult film industry when it came to follow-up care. I felt very neglected when it came to the follow-up care, to the point to where I felt like I was sidelined, and it became a huge political battle of, you know, them feeling that they're above the law to where they don't feel that they should have to abide by the law that's already in place, that condoms are already required, yet they're not following that law. When I got into this industry, you know, they tell you you'll be protected by the testing that's in place, that testing is enough, because you test every 30 days. But if you really think about it, during that 30-day timeframe where you test, you have another 30 days where you can get herpes or chlamydia or HIV and go out there and spread it to other performers who are also having sex in our personal lives. This has become a huge issue. If a construction worker has to wear a construction hat, or if a doctor has to wear gloves, it should be only fair that performers should wear barrier protection, which is condom use. It's absurd to me that the city is kind of passing the buck on to the state officials to do something about this, when I think, you know, this is where adult films is produced. So I think it's up to you guys to step up and take care of this issue yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burks, and I agree.
Wow. Okay, massive First Amendment case law, all about this kind of subject. So for me, it's a free hit today if I want a total free hit on this one. We've got Bill Carter here, too, so he can take a message back to Nuch from me. How about when you get back to the office, pull a condom over Nuch's head so he doesn't infect us with any more of his kind of ordinances and things that are violating us? But these are hideous things, hideous diseases and things, of course. You'd have to be in favor of it. It's a Band-Aid approach, you know, I mean, the enforcement, all these things. It's, you know, clearly, there's not enough clean people out there for this industry anymore. You know, and it's an indictment that the city has to be undertaking this kind of thing at this point. You know, anyway, take the message to Nuch. That's what I wanted to say, the dickhead that he is.
Come on, Matthew. All right, Mr. Weinstein, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have worked closely with many of you. I am President of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, as you know. I've been working in this field in Los Angeles for 25 years. We didn't believe that the lives of gay men were disposable in the '80s. We didn't think that African families were expendable, and we certainly don't think that these performers, mostly young women, don't deserve protection. So we've come down to the 11th hour and the 59th minute. It's up to this council to decide whether there's going to be an election on June the 5th to decide this issue, or whether the City Council is going to adopt this measure. So I implore you, first of all, not to waste the city's tax dollars on holding an election, which I believe that most of you know what the outcome of that election will be. As we've said before, it was easy to get these signatures, regardless of people's age, ethnic background, or party affiliation. They see this as an issue of basic fairness. There is no other industry that I am aware of in the state of California that goes on television and tells people that they have no intention of following the law. So on the issue of jurisdiction, as with smoking in bars and restaurants, where the city took the lead, and in so many other areas, we need a joint effort by the city, the county, and the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we move forward on this item, Mr. City Attorney, I want to make sure I don't do anything that's inaccurate here. There's been a request by Mr. Parks to continue item 10. And so what I'd like to do is have us vote on reconsideration and then vote on the continuation of this item. Somebody needs to tell me, for one week. So if we could, if that's appropriate, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And also, before we move forward on this item, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Englander for a brief announcement or introduction.
This would be an interruption, if you will, Mr. President. We have some distinguished guests here today from France, the French police, who are actually stationed temporarily in Washington, D.C. as the liaisons with the embassy, and they just stopped by here from a briefing with the police chief at the PAB. They've come here as well. I was recently in France, where they really rolled out the red carpet, if you will, literally, at the film festival for the LAPD and a lot of delegation that were there from around the world, and they're here today, and we wanted to welcome them here to the city of Los Angeles. You guys can step up, just so they can, you can recognize who they are as well. Thank you very much. It's an honor to have you in our city. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. It is an honor. Now, if we could go back to item 10, if we can open the roll.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue this item for one week until January 17th.
Yes, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. I should have just done a "without objection," but I saw you squirming down there, and it brought joy to me, so I wanted to do it that way. Mr. Carruth, have I started something, or are you prepared to return to this item? Or do you have somebody here?
No, I'd also like to reconsider item number 11 and have it received and filed.
That has been received and filed.
I thought we already did that. In fact, Madam Clerk, didn't we already take that action?
Yes, item 11 was received and filed.
Okay, according to building and safety, they needed us to redo that, but I guess if it's been received and filed, then I think we're where we want to be.
I think we're okay. Anyway, now we're back on item 22. Mr. Carruth, we're back on item number 22, and so I would anticipate that you might say a few words, and then, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we have a clear choice before us today. We can spend literally millions of dollars on an unnecessary election, or we can do the right thing for free. For better or worse, the city of Los Angeles is nationally known as the capital of the adult film industry. We should be nationally known also as the home of a safe adult film industry. We should be doing everything we can to encourage the use of condoms in this business. Now, Cal OSHA has made it clear that we can require film permittees to ensure that adult performers use condoms. We should be doing it regardless of the election, because it's the right thing for public health and public safety. But even if you question Film LA's role in promoting condom use, I don't see how you can put the city in a position of expending literally millions of dollars for an unnecessary election for a common sense measure that is 100% sure to pass if it gets on the ballot. We should be listening to the thousands of people who signed petitions to put this measure on the city ballot, and you know how hard it is to get something on a city ballot? It rarely happens if the item isn't common sense and almost universally supported. We should just pass the ordinance that's before us to make this happen, both because it's the right thing to do and because fiscally, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Carruth. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just want to thank you, Mr. President, as our president, who brought forces together and had a discussion going internally among ourselves to see if we could resolve this issue. So, Mr. Weston, thank you for your leadership on this issue. Folks, many of you know historically my position on the use of condoms and HIV. I lost my first partner, Christopher Lee Blauman. It'll be 16 years this Friday that he passed, and he was a young, beautiful soul, and during the AIDS epidemic in the '80s and the '90s, I lost hundreds of my dearest friends, and I will never recover, frankly, personally, from the loss of such beautiful people, because at that particular time, not only was it a death sentence, but people came out of their closet, and most people didn't know that gay people are everywhere. The line that "I never knew anybody who was gay" has disappeared, because gay people are everywhere, we're part of society, we're part of the world, and we demand our basic civil and human rights. So that brings me into the moment, 16 years later since Chris died, to the City Council here today. Obviously, if you don't have protection on the men who are in the intercourse porno moment, there is the possibility of transferring AIDS and some of these other diseases to the partner that's interacting with you. So it's a question of safety, it's a question of life. Obviously, enforcing it is a tough one, but frankly, if our city goes on record and clearly says that you must have protection for the safety of the person you're with, this is a basic civil and human rights issue. The issue becomes, and I need our city attorney to discuss this, how do we do this with Cal OSHA? How do we deal with the county? How do we deal with the other aspects of it? But of course, as Mr. Carruth said, we could save $4.2 million, which would be helpful, but that isn't as important to me as saving lives. And if our city can clearly show leadership on this issue, my God, 70,000 people signed petitions to put it on the ballot, I think we would be doing the right thing and going in the right direction, and frankly, all pornography done in our great nation has to have those protections, and maybe we could set the example for the rest of the nation to do it. So obviously, I think this is the right thing to do, but I certainly want to hear how the city attorney discusses this and views this to see how we are legally. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. I too want to thank you. I want to thank Mr. Carruth. I want to thank Mr. Weinstein, and a big thank you for the city attorney, for, you know, agreeing, for bringing us all in a room and coming up with something that I hope will be acceptable by this body. At this time, I think it's, well, Mr. City Attorney, I don't want to do your job, but it's appropriate for us to go into closed session at this moment, at this time? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Weston, as stated on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9A.
Okay, so I've been waiting to do this for six years. Let's throw everybody out, except for the council members and their staff. I again thank all of you for coming down and testifying today. Thank you all for coming. We're going to remain in the council chambers. So if you're not with the city attorney's office, and you do not have a business on this item, you're not a representative of one of the council members, please leave the chambers. And sergeants, let me know when we're clear.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the We tip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. We tip hotline, 909-987-5005.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that faces every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as girl beach.
A guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Seeing no announcements, members adjourning motions. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three adjourning motions of three people who were very significant in the lives of our city, and I would ask that if every member is willing, that we all sign on. First, I would like to adjourn in memory of Patrick Donald Martin, a sixth-generation Californian and a fourth-generation architect. In two thousand, Patrick received his Bachelor of Architecture degree from the University of Southern California. While still a student, he worked on the City Hall Seismic Rehabilitation Project, gaining valuable experience in the field of architecture. He went on to serve as an A.C. Martin Associate and Board Member for the past eleven years, the same firm his great-grandfather founded over a hundred and six years ago. While at A.C. Martin, he worked on some of the firm's most challenging projects, gaining experience at every turn. In two thousand five, he was promoted to Associate, becoming a licensed architect; in two thousand seven, and a lead accredited professional; in two thousand eight. In two thousand ten, Patrick is honored to volunteer his time as a member of the University of Southern California Architectural Guild, supporting the USC School of Architecture. In addition to his professional life, Patrick was also an avid flyer, working with his family to design and construct high-performance aircrafts. He was currently working on the Hall of Justice remodel and the Wilshire Grand Project. Throughout his long and courageous battle with cancer, he never wavered in his determination and optimism to live his life to the fullest, and his passing leaves a huge gap in the lives of all those who were lucky enough to know and work with him. He is survived by his wife Danielle and their children, Thomas and William, and he is the son of Chris Martin. So I would ask that all members sign on.
All members.
I would also like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Geraldine R. Washington, who was an educator, a volunteer, and head of the Los Angeles branch of the NAACP. Born Geraldine Robinson on June eighteen, nineteen thirty, in Little Rock, Arkansas, Geraldine became an active member within the community of First Baptist Church Highland Park. She received her Master's in Education at the University of Arkansas and her Doctorate in Education from UCLA. She devoted over forty years of her professional life to education as an elementary school instructor, reading specialist, and personnel specialist administrator. In her time, she organized the creation of the Los Angeles Unified School District United Negro College Fund, designed to send hundreds of students to historically African-American colleges and universities. This experience made her the ideal candidate to serve as Los Angeles's branch of the NAACP as president. In this role, she addressed the decline of African-American students attending the UC system, and she reached back to younger leaders and forged relationships with the UCLA Black Alumni Association, Mondla Kahisi, and the president of the Los Angeles Urban League, co-chairing the Alliance for Equal Opportunity in Education with Blair Taylor. Through her efforts, enrollment of African-Americans nearly tripled at UCLA. Working through her role at NAACP, she reactivated programs designed to support students who had excelled in art, science, technology, and developed a community skills center for youth training in computer and broadcasting skills. She is survived by her husband of fifty-seven years, Willie Washington Senior, her son Stanley, her grandchildren Christian and Jason, sister Dorothy Stewart, brother Richard Tyrone Robinson, and all those lives that she touched. And finally, and I would love to have all members on, Dr. Washington's, I would also like to adjourn in memory of Arthur James Johnson, Jr., who was a beloved member of the city family. His thirty-three-year career with the city began in nineteen sixty-four. He was Building and Safety's general manager from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-seven, and he implemented numerous cost- and time-saving measures. He led the charge to microfilm and computerize the city's millions of pages of grading reports, helping to increase access to the public and cut through administrative inefficiencies. Three other city departments adopted the same system as a validation of its success. Under his direction, the city council implemented the Joint Water Conservation Project with the Department of Water and Power, a contract nuisance abatement program to remove long-term blighted properties from the city, and a vehicle establishment inspection program to clean up the city's automotive junkyards and repair shops. Art's professional credentials included a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from Cal State University Long Beach, and state licenses as a structural engineer and a fire protection engineer. After retirement, Art continued his volunteer work with his alma mater, Cal State University at Long Beach, and he received the President's Distinguished Service Award in two thousand four, and was inducted into the Cal State University Long Beach Forty-Niner Athletics Hall of Fame in two thousand five. Throughout his career, he was the recipient of several mayoral and city council commendations during his career, including being honored as the nineteen ninety-six City of Los Angeles Employee of the Year. He is survived by his wife of forty-nine years, Margaret, three children, and five grandchildren, and he will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Labonne?
Absolutely, all members. Art Johnson was a great representative. Building and Safety used to be on the fourth floor, right here, all the work that he did. God rest his soul. I would like to also ask we adjourn in memory of Phyllis Zimmerman. She's the mother of Jeff Zimmerman. Jeff, as you know, is the cert coordinator for Mayor Villarreal. His mother just passed last week, much loved by many people. In addition, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Robert O'Rourke, who was Director of Public Affairs for Caltech. For many, many years, he was the PR person for Caltech, and a great guy. He's survived by his wife of many, many years, Sandy, and their four children. Robert O'Rourke, a great Irishman, a great Californian, a great member of the Caltech family. God rest his soul.
Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. With great sadness, I announce the passing of Luisa Vargas Fuentes on December twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven. She was born on June twenty-first, nineteen twenty-two, in Tacan, Tacambaro, Michoacan, and was the oldest child of Francisco Vargas and Amelia Reyes Vargas. Luisa married Ismael Fuentes on January twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-seven, and moved to the San Fernando Valley in May of nineteen fifty-seven. Luisa raised her five children as a full-time housewife and loving mother in the city of San Fernando. Later, the Fuentes family settled in Pacoima, California, where they still reside to this day. Luisa was considered the matriarch of the Fuentes family and was very involved and devoted to her faith. Every year, Luisa traveled to her native state of Michoacan to participate in the patron saint celebration of La Preciosa Sangre de Cristo in Quiroga, Michoacan. She's survived by her husband Ismael of sixty-five years of marriage, and her children, Elia, Emma, Jaime, Jorge, Javier, and sixteen grandchildren and eleven great-grandchildren. She will be truly missed by all of the members of the Fuentes families. She is also the aunt of Yolanda Fuentes Miranda, who works in the mayor's office, and also of Felipe Fuentes, our Assemblyman in the
Okay, now we're back in open session. Mr. City Attorney, you have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. President. On item number two, in closed session, council agreed to the settlement agreement proposed by the defendants in this lawsuit, which includes recommendation to dismiss the lawsuit without prejudice, that the city either adopt the ordinance or submit the initiative to the voters, and to create a working group to study the proposed ordinance and make recommendations. The vote was eleven to one with Councilmember Englander voting now.
Okay, now, we have to address the motion on item twenty-two C. Mr. Coretts moves option A.
Option one would be to present and adopt the accompanying ordinance without alteration.
Second by Mr. Rosendorf. Yeah, clarify what we're voting on now.
What's before council right now is item twenty-two, which is an ordinance relative to the initiative petition to require condom usage in adult film industry and related permitting requirements. There's a motion before you by Mr. Coretts and Rosendorf, which would move option number one, which would present and adopt the accompanying ordinance, which would, without alteration, which is the ordinance as submitted and approved by the petitioners, the precise language of the petition signed by the seventy thousand petitioners.
So has that been clarified? And Mr. City Attorney, we need to now vote in public on?
Yes, this is a vote on the ordinance.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
All right, next item of business.
The ordinance will be held over for one week.
I understand. The next order of business would be item twenty-two C, and it's my understanding that the city attorney has some verbal clarification language that he'd like to add to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the moving clause of item number twenty-two C, the amending motion, on the fourth line of the moving clause, right after health standards board comma, our office recommends that the following clause be inserted, and other relevant stakeholders invited at the discretion of the CIO comma.
All right, then, without objection, on item twenty-two C as amendment amended, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Rosendorf, for a brief introduction.
With me is Gary and Ann Wasserman. Gary and Ann Wasserman are dear friends of mine from Washington DC. Gary and I worked together in a presidential campaign. He was a major speechwriter, and I'd like to have Gary just come over into the camera so that people could see him. We are getting older in life, I've lost all my hair, but Gary got gray and everything, and now he's in Dubai, right? He's in Dubai where he's teaching, and I just wanted to introduce Gary and his lovely wife over there, Ann. Thank you very much.
Well, he probably will not visit us again because he's, will be concerned about, you know, talking about his grayness or what have you. Look, I think you look great gray, and we are welcome back here anytime.
Very distinguished man here, I might add.
My best to you and your wife.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to reconsider item number seventeen.
Without objection. We have to vote on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas.
Earlier today, we put item seventeen over for two weeks. I would like to continue to put it over, but let's put it over earlier in the month, and it appears that Tuesday, the seventeenth, would probably be the appropriate day. So I move that we put the item over to the seventeenth of January, which is a Tuesday.
Without objection. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Members, any announcements? Seeing no announcements, members adjourning motions. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three adjourning motions of three people who were very significant in the lives of our city, and I would ask that, if every member is willing, that we all sign on. First, I would like to adjourn in memory of Patrick Donald Martin, a sixth-generation Californian and a fourth-generation architect. In two thousand, Patrick received his Bachelor of Architecture degree from the University of Southern California. While still a student, he worked on the City Hall Seismic Rehabilitation Project, gaining valuable experience in the field of architecture. He went on to serve as an A.C. Martin Associate and Board Member for the past eleven years, the same firm his great-grandfather founded over a hundred and six years ago. While at A.C. Martin, he worked on some of the firm's most challenging projects, gaining experience at every turn. In two thousand five, he was promoted to Associate, becoming a licensed architect; in two thousand seven, and a lead accredited professional in two thousand eight. In two thousand ten, Patrick was honored to volunteer his time as a member of the University of Southern California Architectural Guild, supporting the USC School of Architecture. In addition to his professional life, Patrick was also an avid flyer, working with his family to design and construct high-performance aircrafts. He was currently working on the Hall of Justice remodel and the Wilshire Grand Project. Throughout his long and courageous battle with cancer, he never wavered in his determination and optimism to live his life to the fullest, and his passing leaves a huge gap in the lives of all those who were lucky enough to know and work with him. He is survived by his wife Danielle and their children, Thomas and William, and he is the son of Chris Martin. So I would ask that all members sign on. I would also like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Geraldine R. Washington, who was an educator, a volunteer, and head of the Los Angeles branch of the NAACP. Born Geraldine Robinson on June eighteen, nineteen thirty, in Little Rock, Arkansas, Geraldine became an active member within the community of First Baptist Church Highland Park. She received her Master's in Education at the University of Arkansas and her Doctorate in Education from UCLA. She devoted over forty years of her professional life to education as an elementary school instructor, reading specialist, and personnel specialist administrator. In her time, she organized the creation of the Los Angeles Unified School District United Negro College Fund, designed to send hundreds of students to historically African-American colleges and universities. This experience made her the ideal candidate to serve as Los Angeles's branch of the NAACP as president. In this role, she addressed the decline of African-American students attending the UC system, and she reached back to younger leaders and forged relationships with the UCLA Black Alumni Association, Manla Kaisi, and the president of the Los Angeles Urban League, co-chairing the Alliance for Equal Opportunity in Education with Blair Taylor. Through her efforts, enrollment of African-Americans nearly tripled at UCLA. Working through her role at NAACP, she reactivated programs designed to support students who had excelled in art, science, technology, and developed a community skills center for youth training in computer and broadcasting skills. She is survived by her husband of fifty-seven years, Willie Washington Senior, her son Stanley, her grandchildren, Christian and Chayson, sister Dorothy Stewart, brother Richard Tyrone Robinson, and all those lives that she touched. And finally, and I would love to have all members on, Dr. Washington's, I would also like to adjourn in memory of Arthur James Johnson Jr., who was a beloved member of the city family. His thirty-three-year career with the city began in nineteen sixty-four. He was Building and Safety's General Manager from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-seven, and he implemented numerous cost and time-saving measures. He led the charge to microfilm and computerize the city's millions of pages of grading reports, helping to increase access to the public, and cut through administrative inefficiencies. Three other city departments adopted the same system as a validation of its success. Under his direction, the city council implemented the Joint Water Conservation Project with the Department of Water and Power, a contract nuisance abatement program to remove long-term blighted properties from the city, and a vehicle establishment inspection program to clean up the city's automotive junkyards and repair shops. Art's professional credentials included a Master of Science and Civil Engineering from Cal State University Long Beach, and state licenses as a structural engineer and a fire protection engineer. After retirement, Art continued his volunteer work with his alma mater, Cal State University at Long Beach, and he received the president's Distinguished Service Award in two thousand four, and was inducted into the Cal State University Long Beach Forty-Niner Athletics Hall of Fame in two thousand five. Throughout his career, he was the recipient of several mayoral and city council commendations during his career, including being honored as the nineteen ninety-six City of Los Angeles Employee of the Year. He is survived by his wife of forty-nine years, Margaret, three children, and five grandchildren, and he will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Laban.
Absolutely, all members. Art Johnson was a great representative. Building and Safety used to be on the fourth floor, right here, all the work that he did, God rest his soul. I would like to also ask, we adjourn in memory of Phyllis Zimmerman. She's the mother of Jeff Zimmerman. Jeff, as you know, is the CERT coordinator for Mayor Villarreal. His mother just passed last week, much loved by many people. In addition, I'd like to ask, we adjourn in memory of Robert O'Rourke, who was Director of Public Affairs for Caltech. For many, many years, he was the PR person for Caltech, and a great guy. He's survived by his wife of many, many years, Sandy and their four children. Robert O'Rourke, a great Irishman, a great Californian, and a great member of the Caltech family, God rest his soul.
Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. With great sadness, I announce the passing of Luisa Vargas Fuentes on December twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven. She was born on June twenty-first, nineteen twenty-two, in Tacambaro, Michoacán, and was the oldest child of Francisco Vargas and Amelia Reyes Vargas. Luisa married Ismael Fuentes on January twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-seven, and moved to the San Fernando Valley in May of nineteen fifty-seven. Luisa raised her five children as a full-time housewife and loving mother in the city of San Fernando. Later, the Fuentes family settled in Pacoima, California, where they still reside to this day. Luisa was considered the matriarch of the Fuentes family and was very involved and devoted to her faith. Every year, Luisa traveled to her native state of Michoacán to participate in the patron saint celebration of La Preciosa Sangre de Cristo in Quiroga, Michoacán. She's survived by her husband Ismael of sixty-five years of marriage, and her children, Elia, Emma, Jaime, Jorge, Javier, and sixteen grandchildren and eleven great-grandchildren. She will be truly missed by all of the members of the Fuentes families. She is also the aunt of Yolanda Fuentes Miranda, who works in the mayor's office, and also of Felipe Fuentes, our assemblyman in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Any more adjourning? This meeting, members, is now adjourned.